For an invocation led by Alder Scannell.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am not religious, but if I were, I think I'd be a Zoroastrian. So, Zoroastrianism goes back thousands of years, influenced Judaism, Islam, and especially Christianity. I'm not going to go into all the many influences, other than to say, the story of the three wise men bringing gifts to baby Jesus. Those wise men were Magi. Magi is what Zoroastrian priests are called. So, Zoroastrians believe in the threefold path: Manashni, Gavashni, Kunashni. Think good thoughts, say good words, do good deeds. I think no matter what you believe or don't believe, that's a good path to be on. I think we should all be on that path. So, as we deliberate here tonight, let us reason honestly, let us speak wisely, and may our actions be a shining light on the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder, for those words. Onto approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes from the October 5, 2021, meeting made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any corrections there? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, tonight's agenda made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any changes? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda has been approved. Report by the mayor. Just a couple of announcements here from me. Mentioned this last time, but wanted to reiterate, we have our town halls coming up on both the city budget and the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that have been allocated to the city of Green Bay. First one's on the 21st, the second one's on the 26th, so encouraging Alders and community members to participate if possible. Would love to see you all there. Then, a couple of different events that we have coming up this weekend, just wanted to flag for you all. Make a Difference Day, put on by the Volunteer Center, will be on Saturday, starting bright and early over at the Volunteer Center on 9th. And then, we have the 85th anniversary celebration of the Wildlife Sanctuary, so that'll be on Saturday morning as well, but a whole day full of activities, so please, you know, feel free to attend. Reach out to Dan Ditchite, our Parks Director, and the Wildlife Sanctuary directly for some of those details. And then, finally, a little later on in the morning, 11 o'clock over at the Cherry Street Landing, we'll be celebrating the Bart Starr Memorial Bridge naming. I know Alder Steyer will certainly be there, as being someone who brought forward this idea initially and brought it to our state legislators, but inviting the community as a whole to attend. The governor's going to be there, a bunch of our state legislators, so of course, and most importantly, the Starr family will be in attendance. Cherry and Bart Jr. are planning to attend, so would love to see a great turnout from council and from the community there. Final note of the evening is some unfortunate news. I think the council has received this update, but sad to report that our city attorney, Vanessa Chavez, will be leaving us for more southern pastures, I guess, down in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. I've had the pleasure of serving with Vanessa for two and a half years. Some of you have served a little bit longer than that with her, you know, served with a couple mayors and a number of different councils, and I think irrespective of the situation and the climate, has served this council and this mayor and this community with absolute distinction, the highest ethics and morals, and so we are absolutely going to miss her. Very excited for the opportunity that she has in front of her and excited for her family, but we are absolutely going to miss her. So, with that, I will turn things over to council for announcements. Alder Dorf.
Thank you, that's kind of a nice segue. This announcement is about Attorney Chavez. The International Municipal Lawyers Association has recognized City Attorney Vanessa Chavez as one of the top 10 attorneys with Spanish-speaking roots who serve as powerful leaders in our municipal legal communities. So, congratulations, Attorney Chavez, for this high honor. Thank you.
Very well said. One of the many distinctions, I think, that Vanessa's already received in her career. Alder Scannell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to congratulate Attorney Chavez. It's been a pleasure working with you. I've always wanted to be very professional and a lot of fun to work with, actually. I'm going to miss you, but wish you the best. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A couple weeks ago, the city council made a vote, 7 to 5, to move forward with retaining council from law forward, and been really conflicted since then whether or not I wanted to say anything, but I feel very uncomfortable with the vote, and based on a document that we had recently received a few weeks back, I feel like there are special interest groups. Anytime the city of Green Bay engages with a special interest group, especially on something as critical as election integrity and our defense, I don't feel comfortable sharing information or conferring with this legal council until they disclose to the city of Green Bay who is funding their operations. I think that that's a reasonable request on behalf of the public, to which this government belongs to. I just simply do not feel comfortable. Thank you.
That's already been stated, but appreciate that. Others from the council? Alder Steyer.
Again, thank you for that comment on for the Bart Starr Memorial. Looking forward to it, 11 o'clock, be there. It'll be a great event. And I'd also like to congratulate Attorney Chavez. I had the opportunity to work with her under both administrations, and a lot of tough issues that we had to deal with, but she was very professional and wish her all the best.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements from council? All right, seeing none. We don't have any appointments this evening, so we're going to move along to the presentation that's before us. Presentation by Resiliency Coordinator Melissa Schmitz and members of the Sustainability Commission on the Greenhouse Gas Benchmarking Report for the City of Green Bay's Buildings and Operations Using 2018 as the baseline year. So, I'm going to kick things over to Ms. Schmitz. I know there are a couple members of our Sustainability Commission that are going to join in with that presentation, but want to thank and recognize Melissa for all her work on this, as well as our Sustainability Commission, who have really taken an active role in shaping, not just this document, but sort of the trajectory of a lot of the work that Melissa's engaged in and the city as a whole have been. So, you are muted, Melissa?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I've met with Melissa Schmitz, your Resiliency Coordinator, and tonight, we have two members of our Sustainability Commission, John Arnt and Seth Hoffmeister, are going to get this presentation started. I have a conclusion at the end. This is, the baseline year is 2008, and Sustainability Commission undertook this as a project to benchmark the city buildings and operations greenhouse gas emissions. So, with that, I will turn it over to John Arnt. And John, if you'd like to say a couple words and introduce yourself, please, before you get started.
Thanks, Melissa. Yes, I'm John Arnt, I'm one of the Sustainability Commission members. My address is 726 Sunrise Lane, Green Bay. And Melissa, do you want me to begin this first part, or was Seth going to lead off?
Seth, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself as well?
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, John. Good to be here virtually this evening. I'm Seth Hoffmeister, 1136 Law Street, and I've had the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Sustainability Commission since it was created in 2018. So, if we can go to the first slide here, I'm just going to start and talk a little bit about some of our clean energy goals and how we got to where we are and some of the work that we're doing. So, the Sustainability Commission was created in 2018 under previous Mayor Jim Schmidt, and it was created by a big push of activists in the community who wanted to deal with things like climate change and the already felt impacts of climate change at the local level. And a really big part of dealing with climate change is clean energy. So, our first meeting, which was almost exactly three years ago, in October of 2018, we set a goal of 100% clean energy by 2050 for both the city as an institution and the community at large. Just days after taking office in April of 2019, Mayor Denrick doubled down on that commitment of 100% clean energy by 2050. We started taking a closer look at how we could go about hitting that goal, both as the city and the community, with a very rough draft renewable energy work plan to outline some of the partners that we would work with and how we would start actually achieving that goal. Just before COVID, I think it was in early 2020, we met to further outline some of our steps and some of our additional goals. And then, most recently, y'all may recall, in May of 2021, you all passed a resolution that both gave the city of Green Bay membership and the newly-created Wisconsin Local Government Climate Coalition, but also reiterated our commitment to 100% clean energy by 2050. So, the last goal was passed by council and all of the other goals came before you at one time or another, with the exception of the mayoral proclamation. So, let's go to the next slide and dig in a little bit more. We've really taken our clean energy goal in a twofold approach. Now, what we have control over as a city is the citywide goal. We've made a few steps in the right direction in order to make all of our electrical use clean energy by that target date. Most notably, we used some Lambo Stadium Tax funds to upgrade the solar installation at Light Park, which you can monitor online. There's a really cool dashboard you can find on our Sustainability Commission webpage. And most recently, Fire Station Number 5 on East Mason was equipped with solar arrays. Again, that also came from the Lambo Stadium Tax money. John, in a minute here, is going to go through one of the most crucial steps in hitting that goal, which is creating that baseline. If we want to hit net zero by a certain date, we first need to know what we are doing to use that as a baseline. We also have made that commitment community-wide. Prior to COVID, we had an informal group of advocates, folks that were working on this with other local governments in the region, experts. I want to give a big shout out to Jenny Brinker and WTC, folks at the United and working on this, Green Bay School District, Brown County, even Appleton, folks that are all working on very similar goals to figure out how we can do this as a community. The work is really just starting, but it's this next step here that has been really our first concrete step in the right direction. So, I'm going to kick it over to John to talk about the baseline. So, take it away, John.
Sure, thank you, Seth. As Seth alluded to, we, as a clean energy work group, our subset of the Sustainability Commission, started looking at this process. We realized if we're going to get to carbon neutral, we've got to develop a plan, and really, developing that plan starts with developing a baseline of what does carbon look like for the city of Green Bay. So, when we started this process in fall of 2019, we had some initial data to work with, and we spent the beginning part of that time compiling that data, and we were working with 2018 data, which was essentially the most current full year of data we had. We brought in some volunteer help to compile that data, and through that process, we determined we were missing things, and we still needed additional data, and we worked with, at that point, Chief of Staff Celestein Jeffries to sort of be the intermediary to work through and with the departments to accumulate data that we didn't have in front of us, and basically anything in terms of city properties that have a WPS invoice attached to it for. So, while we had a lot of data for city buildings, we were missing streetlights, traffic lights, some of the pumps for the storm sewers and the sanitary storm sewers. There are a bunch of areas that you just don't think of initially that we needed help with getting that data. And we spent a good part of 2020 working with not only volunteers, but we had a student from UW-Green Bay helping us to compile that, and took that data and entered it into a tool that we've got at the top of the slide, EPA Local Greenhouse Gas Inventory Tool. That information, once we have it all compiled, calculates what your carbon footprint looks like. Now, currently, we have a number of essentially for the city of Green Bay, this is City of Green Bay Operations, of 31,293 metric, that's our carbon footprint, but that is based on the data that we currently have. We're still missing additional data, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But what that's coming from, and you can see up in the top or the middle of the slide, we've got Scope 1, Scope 2, and Scope 3 emissions. Scope 1, the short definition is it's mostly natural gas and city fuel. So, that was additional data that we needed, all the fuel used for the city. Scope 2 emissions, generally speaking, most of the electricity that we use as a city. And then, Scope 3, we have no data for that yet. That is additionally some areas that we need to look at, but often, you calculate the employee commute and business travel is something that goes in there. That is part, if it's associated with the city, not necessarily operations owned by the city, but it goes part and parcel with city operations, it needs to be included in there. So, that's additional data we might need, but as you can see, our number is 31,293 tons, metric tons. Melissa, why don't you jump to the next slide? So, where does that put us in comparison to other cities? Especially knowing that it's not total. I found three other cities that had populations a little above, a little below what Green Bay is at, and if you look at their metric tons, it almost seems like we're in line, but we are slightly higher. If we look at this as metric tons per city resident, it's about .3 metric tons per resident here in Green Bay. Compared to the other cities, you can see it's .25, .15, oh, .25. What it tells me right now, knowing that we still have additional data, we are definitely higher than comparison cities, but there are a lot of factors that weigh into that. And also, if you look at the dates of their reports, we're kind of a little behind them in getting started in this. So, these are cities that have already had opportunities to start reducing their carbon footprint. In terms of the data that we still need, as I pointed out, we need the employee commuting behavior and travel. We also kind of look at what's our, what kind of solid waste are we generating? We need data on that. The pesticides and herbicides that we're using for our parks. What's the urban tree canopy? We know as a city, we have a pretty good idea what the urban tree canopy is, but we don't necessarily know what that canopy looks like on all of the city-owned properties. Because we're here, we're just looking at city-owned operations. And is there some factor we can use for water treatment? So, we're trying to refine this, but we've got a fairly decent start in an idea of what our carbon footprint is, and once we refine this and get to that number, well, the next step will be to developing a plan to, how do we get to zero?
Okay. I think that leads me to our next steps. So, primarily, to get community-wide electricity and natural gas data municipality, we will be working with our utility providers, so WPS, on getting the community-wide data. And it wouldn't be specific meter data, you know, for every resident or every business. It's a broader number than that, and they can give us information that is still respecting people's privacy, where it's just meter counts. So, meters of, industrial meters, commercial meters, general service meters, and residential meters. So, we need to get that from WPS. That's a big next step as far as including that with our community-wide benchmark. Secondly, we need to seek funding to develop a community action plan, otherwise known as a CAP. So, when you see CAP, sometimes it's called Climate Action Plans, sometimes it's called, you know, an Energy Efficiency Action Plan. It's named differently in different communities, but we do need to seek funding for that because it's a big endeavor, and we will likely be enlisting the help of a consultant to be able to do that, working with staff, and part of that is communicating and engaging with stakeholders. It's a huge part of a community action plan. So, that is, you know, it's already started with the, as talked about, that led us to where we are right now. We do need to do more outreach and really engage the business community as well in this. Another step is developing mitigation strategies and policies. These policies would be city-specific policies for city buildings to increase efficiency. There's a lot of different ways of reaching the goal. It's not all putting up solar panels. There's energy efficiency, which is improving the efficiency of the technology that we have in our buildings, our HVAC systems, our lighting, our boilers, efficiency of our fleet vehicles, energy conservation, which is, a large part is behavior change, which is probably the toughest one to get going. And then, also renewable energy strategies, increasing the tree canopy cover to, as a carbon sequestration tactic. That's probably our lowest cost, is more investment in tree canopy and other types of vegetation in the city. So, lots of different strategies and policies that can be done. And then, a continual part of this effort ongoing is tracking our progress. So, what cities do, what businesses do that have similar goals to this, is they create an annual report, it's tracking your energy efficiency projects. It's, you know, probably at least a staff person, maybe part of a staff person's time in doing that, to be able to track the progress as we go along. And the last point I want to mention is, we really need, as a city, to be able to explore partnerships with other local governments and other businesses on reduce carbon emissions. We're not the only city in Brown County that's looking at this. The county is starting to look at this as well. I think that together, the local governments and tribal community, we can do a lot. We can apply for grants together to make this a more efficient strategy. And I guess that's all I have to say at this point. If there's any questions, we would be happy to address those.
Great. Thanks again, Melissa, to you for all your work, and also to John and Seth, who, as I think everybody knows, have day jobs, you know, and are doing this sort of out of the goodness of their hearts as great citizens of the city of Green Bay. So, we're really appreciative for all their time and dedication to this effort. Questions from our common council for our presenters? All right. Doesn't look like we have any. So, thanks again for being here tonight and for all the great work.
Thank you.
And now, we will move along to ordinance's second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion has been made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Weary, to suspend the rules and take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt these items made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
Alders, um, thank you. It's just Alder Steyer and Alder Dorf. Can you please vote?
Alders Steyer and Dorf, vote aye.
Thank you very much, and I will display. Alders, um, thank you. It's just Alder Steyer and Alder Dorf. Can you please vote?
Alders Steyer and Dorf, vote aye.
Thank you very much, and I will display.
And those are adopted 11-0. Onto Committee the whole. Item 1K1 here, consideration with possible action on a resolution opposing construction on Enbridge Energy Lines 3 and 5 Tar sands oil pipeline, referred by Alder Scannell. Motion to adopt has been made by Alder Scannell and seconded by Alder Dorf. Alder Scannell, do you have comments on your resolution?
Maybe I'll wait and see what other people have got to say, and I believe there might be some people here, or mine too, also would like to speak.
Very good. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just simply wanted to say there are some fine ladies and gentlemen from the public who would like to speak on the issue, so I'd like to make a motion to open the floor to hear from the public.
Motion has been made by Alder Burnett to open the floor, seconded by Alder Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it, the floor is open. And for anybody that would like to speak, just a reminder to state your name and address, and then you can begin.
Mayor, just give me one moment, please, and I will go ahead and put up the, would you prefer a three-minute timer or a two-minute timer?
Yeah, three minutes is customary, so we'll go with that.
Thank you very much. Just give me one moment, if you please.
You bet. Whoever's ready can approach, certainly.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kiri Jane Holmes. My address is 1120 Law Street, Green Bay. It is important to note that neither Line 3 or Line 5 are located in Green Bay. I respectfully request that you vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Your Honor, I am certainly ready for the next person with the timer. Thank you so much.
Okay, sounds great.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Greisbach. I live in Hortonville, Wisconsin, and I'm speaking on behalf of one of my coworkers who is sick tonight. His name is Donald Saha, lives at 1125 Rally Street in Green Bay. We are operating engineers, and we belong to Local 139. There are over 10,000 of us in the state of Wisconsin. We understand and appreciate that native communities are deeply connected to and concerned with the environment. And I want to clarify again that Line 3 project replaces old pipeline with new, safer and more environmentally responsible infrastructure. Line 3 has already been replaced in Wisconsin and North Dakota. Line 5 replacement project was intended to meet the requests of the tribe most directly affected by Line 5, the Bad River. The Bad River asked the Enbridge move the existing Line 5 pipeline off of tribal land, and Line 5 replacement project meets that request. Fossil fuels are still needed for everyday life in function. It is not realistic to shut down all pipelines. I am sure most of us drove here tonight. I would prefer products to be transferred, and I'm sure you guys could consider agreeing with me on this, I would prefer products to be transferred from within North America than from overseas with foreign sources where we have no knowledge or ability to control the environmental impacts. If Line 5 is not built, the product would be shipped in 2,100 trucks a day, which is 90 tanker trucks an hour. Transportation by pipeline is the most environmentally responsible mode of transportation for all communities in Wisconsin. It's 25 times safer than rail, 38 times safer than barging, and 3,000 times safer than trucks, and we have a trucking shortage in this country now. Enbridge, Enbridge has been a good community partner. They employ almost 350 people in Wisconsin, and they pay over $35 million in property taxes to local communities. Enbridge isn't just a pipeline company, it's an extensive renewable energy portfolio, including 20 wind farms and four solar facilities. Jobs. Line 5 reroute will require 700 construction workers, most of which Line 5 reroute will require 700 construction workers, most of which will come from Wisconsin. And construction workers, like me, depend on projects like this to survive. People have trained their entire life to build these pipelines. These are members of the construction trade professionals. These are good-paying jobs, they're family-supporting jobs. I am here tonight to speak for the workers, too. Construction jobs are not temporary. I want to refer to, a dentist does not go to work every day to work on the same tooth. A lawyer does not go to work every day to work on the same case. In closing, it is important to note that neither Line 5 or 3 are located in Green Bay. I would caution against assuming that you know all of the facts necessary to approve this resolution, which has broad, sweeping allegations and declarations, and should be fully invested as true before this council adopts this resolution. I respectfully respect-
Thank you, Mr. Griesbach, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to check in with our online observers to see if anyone would like to speak to this item, and then I'll go back to our in-house visitors.
Is there anyone else in person? Otherwise, I'd like to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. Justice, would you please give your first name and last name and your address, and then you can start speaking.
Yeah, my name is Justice Pacheco, and I live on 12994 Velp Avenue, 54313. So I'd like to start out by saying, I'd like to ask the county or the board to vote in favor of the resolution. A little bit about myself, that my dad worked in construction his whole life in a union which supported our family. And I think it's important to say that we don't need to maintain any polluting industries to provide good jobs, and focus should be put on a just transition. I'd like to echo a sentiment often expressed by both water protectors and Enbridge, that no one wants to see a pipeline leak. This is across the board. Enbridge itself says it would like to be the corporation that doesn't have any leaks. I think everyone agrees with this. And the issue here is that Enbridge's record shows a clear pattern of negligence when it comes to preventing leaks or being transparent when it does mess up and have a leak or causes environmental harm. Just in the last month, Enbridge was fined over $3 million by the state of Minnesota for breaching an aquifer during construction of Line 3, and then failing to report the breach to the DNR. While commenting on this, Minnesota's DNR said that Enbridge's actions are clear violations of state law and also of public trust. Enbridge is currently being investigated for possibly breaching two other aquifers, neither of which were reported. In addition to this, the corporation failed to meet a deadline set by Minnesota's Department of Natural Resources to repair the aquifer. And on top of all of this, Enbridge is, or Enbridge along with its joint ventures and subsidiaries, averaged to spill every 20 days between 2002 and 2018. And I mention these things because they show where Enbridge's priorities lie, and exemplify the manner in which the corporation operates. Enbridge framed the recent work on Line 3 as a replacement project, trying to prevent leaks, but it always conveniently failed to mention that the new Line 3 transportation, or the new Line 3 pipeline, transports nearly double the volume of tar sands oil, now carrying emissions equivalent to 50 coal-fired power plants every single day. Really, Enbridge's investment in the new Line 3 has been an investment to increase fossil fuel production. And the last point I would like to make is that these lines directly threaten Green Bay's waters, public health and economy. Line 5 has spilled over 200,000 gallons of oil and natural gas in the Menominee River watershed, which feeds the Menominee River and empties into the Green Bay. The engineers of Line 5 gave the pipeline a life expectancy of 50 years, and that was 68 years ago. And the line lay is decaying and unsupported for incredibly long stretches underneath the Straits of Mackinaw, which connects Lake Michigan and Lake Huron. And these pipelines pose a serious threat to both Great Lakes, and so much so that Michigan's government ordered Enbridge to cease operations in the strait earlier this year. And in response, Enbridge disregarded the order and launched legal challenges. So to quickly recap, Enbridge's pipelines constantly spill, its pipelines violate treaty rights, and the corporation is expanding and building new fossil fuel infrastructure in our state that threatens to lock us into actualizing in the worst-case scenarios. The scientific community is warning us.
Yes, yes, your time has expired. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Any others from within our council chambers who'd like to offer any testimony? All right, anyone else online? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to close the floor.
Motion to close the floor, made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, the floor is closed. Comments from council? Alder Scannell?
Thank you, Your Honor. When this was brought forward to me, I went forward with it because for me, this isn't about anti-oil. I mean, we are dependent upon oil. This isn't about anti-pipeline. I mean, it's about these pipelines. And to me, it boils down to two questions. One, number five, which I am just amazed, I mean, that pipe is well over 50 years old and under the Straits of Mackinaw. I mean, who thinks that's a good idea? I can't believe that was ever put there to begin with. Do we want to risk polluting the Great Lakes, which definitely affects us? The pipeline would pollute Lake Michigan, that's where we get our drinking water. So, and it's a pipeline that goes from Canada, comes down to us, and then back up to Canada. I mean, it just makes no sense to me at all, and why it was ever countenanced to begin with, I don't know, but I certainly hope we could all rise up and say, that's a really bad idea. And that's what this resolution says. It's a bad idea. And then, secondly, it supports treaty rights. Do we stand up and say, it's time to build our infrastructure more equitably? For too long, it has been built on the backs of minority communities. So I think it's just a matter of social justice and standing up and saying, build a pipeline, build a more equitable one, build a pipeline, not through the Great Lakes, for God's sake. So I view this as just a common sense resolution to stand up for something that certainly can affect us. I mean, Enbridge is responsible for the largest oil leak, oil spill on land, and I'm not going to knock Enbridge out. I don't know that company, I don't know any other companies, they may all be trying to do the best they can. I just think it just goes to show, oil spills are inevitable. It's just a matter of when and where. Are we going to take that risk through the Straits of Mackinaw? I think that's insane. I just, it boggles my mind that that's, that somebody thinks that's a good idea. So that's why I support this resolution. Let's just say no, no pipeline in the Straits of Mackinaw, and respect treaty rights, and if they're starting to do that, that's super, that's great, kudos to them. Alls we're saying is, that's what should be happening. So I see this as a, just a matter of fact, simple resolution. I don't see it as controversial, unless someone thinks a pipeline through the Great Lakes is a good idea, and not respecting treaty rights is a good idea. Thank you.
So Alder Dorf?
I have a question, Alder Scannell.
Yes.
So I see the pipeline number 5 is the one that's 65 years old and corroded.
Yep.
And then they're talking about rerouting it, and that's the one that's under the Straits of Mackinaw.
Mackinaw.
Is that proposed reroute not under the Straits of Mackinaw?
I believe it's still through the Straits. As I understand it, it's still through the Straits.
Because, okay, I mean, that would, that's kind of significant if it, whether we know that or not, I guess, right now, but-
As I understand, yeah, I went, and it was mentioned that we shouldn't proceed without looking at the factuals of our wherlasses, but no one mentioned any particular wherass that wasn't factual, and as far as I know, I went through them again, I thought they were factual before, I believe they are factual now. There's nothing in our resolution that is not a fact, that is not-
Right, it just doesn't say what's going to happen to the new, new number 5.
5, right.
So, thank you, I just wondered if you could clarify that.
No, it's, to my knowledge, it's still going under the Straits, and, that's a bad idea.
Thanks, Alders. Alder Galvin?
I have a question for Alder Scannell. Are there other pipelines of any kind underneath any of the Great Lakes?
To my knowledge, no.
So these are the only ones?
Well, only one, 5.
This is the only one?
Yep.
There's no other pipelines for any other kind of energy source, or not that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
If I may say, I would say, if there are, they should go. Whoever thinks putting pipelines through the greatest freshwater body in the world is insane. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Gerlach?
I also have a question for Alder Scannell, or anyone else who can answer this. Is this a time-sensitive thing? You know, is this something that we can take time to consider, or do we have to make a decision tonight whether or not to support this resolution? Is this whole thing, you know, on a tight timeline?
Alder Scannell?
I would say, yeah, we've been putting it off and putting it off and putting it off, and I don't know any reason to, unless there's a good reason to put it off, why would we put it off? As far as I know, the fact, I went through the factuals again, they're factual. There's no reason, you know, we can debate, and to me, I framed how I see the debate. If someone's got another take, I'd like to hear it, but I think it's time to just push on. Let's do this and move on.
Can I respond to that? The reason that I'm concerned and wonder if we have to hurry is that I would say that this is probably the first time in my year and a half as an alder, that I've heard arguments on a topic that absolutely bear no hate, there's nothing political, it's just good people trying to solve a problem. And Alder Scannell knows that when I read this, when I first read this resolution, I said, this is one of the best arguments I've ever read. It is just, it's just a really, really good resolution. You read it from top to bottom, you have to agree with it. And I certainly am in favor of tribal rights and acknowledging the rights of our indigenous people. I know for a fact that the Great Lakes have to be taken care of, have to be preserved. I just heard a wonderful presentation within the last week about the very likely possibility that we are, we here in northeast Wisconsin are positioned in the best place to be when climate change really descends upon the world, because it's the Great Lakes that will save the human race if we preserve the Great Lakes. But then I hear these people who are workers, who are good workers, who want to make an honest living, and they're good people, too. And, you know, I really appreciate the people who spoke tonight, and I just wonder if we can take time, this is one time when we have a thorny issue with a lot of emotion, but no hatred, nothing political, maybe there can be some good discussion that could help bring us to a solution, a more reasonable solution than what is being proposed right now. That's why I just wondered if there's time.
Thanks, Alder. We will get back to Alder Scannell, but we want to allow for a few other folks to speak. Alder Steuer and then Alder Weary?
Thank you, Your Honor. We heard this, it was vetted a bit in our committee, protection and policy, and I, you know, Alder Scannell, maybe you could answer this. There were a couple of wherasses that we altered a little bit. Do you remember offhand what they were? Or maybe not? Okay. But there was a little bit of discussion about changing some of the language.
And I believe some were deleted as well.
Okay, so this is, that is that topic after the deletions, okay. I had the opportunity to talk to some friends in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, got some good friends up there, and I was talking about this issue, and a lot of the folks that live up there rely on this oil and gas, natural gas. They rely on this heavily, and they've pretty much stated to me that if you take this out, it'll really harm that area. Now, it's a rural area, there aren't as many people that live up in that area, and that's up, you know, toward Lake Superior, you know, I think that's one of the big issues we're thinking of. One of my friends mentioned that his father-in-law worked for a company that worked on that project, and he says, kind of like our public works department, they have the digital technology that goes into the pipes and checks things, and they're constantly looking at these pipes to see, you know, the strength of them, the old, you know, are they rusting? Are they, do they need to be replaced? And yes, there have been some spills over time, but, you know, this resolution talks about catastrophic spills, so what is that fine line? 100,000, you know, any spill is not good, but to mention a catastrophic spill, I asked them about that, and they didn't really talk much about it, in terms of like, well, yeah, there was some things that happened, but they took care of it fairly quickly. So, you know, in the last couple of days, we got a lot of emails from people that are in carpenters' unions and other unions that work on these projects, and it's a shame that we at council don't get some of this information earlier. You know, we seem to get hammered with it at the last minute. And I agree with Alder Gerlach in the sense that, you know, talking about time sensitivity, you know, it's a big issue. You know, I mean, it's a resolution, it's not binding, but it's telling Green Bay that this is exactly how we feel. And I agree, I love living on the Great Lakes, I love clean water, I love all the opportunities we have. 20% of all the water, fresh water in the world is here. It's very important that we keep that safe, but we also, until we are fully sustainable, you know, otherwise, we still need oil and natural gas. So I think over time, hopefully that will change and we'll be able to do that. But until that happens, we still need some of these pipelines. So I can't fully support this completely. I support much of it, but I can't rubber stamp it as it is. So unless something else changes, that's all I have for now.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a beautiful sound. It's usually you, yeah. For me, it's a misguided waste of time. It's a resolution. We always talk about resolutions here that go nowhere. So instead of us spending time maybe talking about our streets and our parks and other city problems, now we have to discuss a resolution about a pipeline 300 miles away from us. So I don't know if anybody else did any research, but I did. I actually emailed the company that's putting this in, I emailed them yesterday, and they emailed me back regarding some of the comments in the resolution. I think it's interesting, and I didn't know this till I looked into it, but Line 3, which is, I don't know, 1,000 miles of pipe, that was a $9 billion project, it's done already. Oil's already flowing. So, and that's the one that goes to Superior, I think it's 14 miles of it are in Wisconsin, it's a very small part. So most of it goes through, what, North Dakota, Minnesota, and then Canada. So we're going to have a resolution against something already built. All right? That's interesting, it's a new one for me. If you look at what happened in Minnesota, they actually went around, you can bring up the maps, and they went around the various reservations, instead of going through like they used to. They went around them. And one they did go through, the Fond du Lac Band of Lake Superior Chippewa, they actually did forge a deal with them to keep the line through. So there's one where they worked hand-in-hand with them and kept it through. So Line 3, don't see why we're even addressing that, it's done. Line 5, there's 41 miles that will be in Wisconsin. It wouldn't have been, it was all in the U.P., but it went through the Bad River Reservation, and they said we wouldn't like it there. So they drew the line down and around it through Wisconsin, and that's why it's in Wisconsin now. All new pipes, you know, replacing, yes, the 50, 60, whatever-year-old pipeline. It seems like we would want a new pipeline, because we're not going to go from no oil and natural gas to, or from all, you know, to none. It's just, you can't cut it and just end. If you're going to do it, that's fine, but it's a gradual, it's a gradual thing. And as was stated, if you do away with the pipelines, now you're looking at 2,100 trucks a day, which are more dangerous, and they themselves burn fossil fuels. And we don't, I work at Schneider, we don't have enough truck drivers, believe me, to do that. So that's not even a reasonable thing. If you want to put it on rail, well, that's even more dangerous, and that's even more diesel. So the alternative is what? Something worse. So we want to vote against something that's already in place for something that's worse. And it's really interesting, in the Straits of Mack- worse. And it's really interesting, in the Straits of Mackinac, it's a four-mile stretch, and it actually goes along the lake bed. And from my finding, I couldn't find any breaks that would cause any great contamination. The proposal is actually to go 100 feet below the lake bed and to carve out a giant tunnel that's a foot or two feet thick of concrete and then encased with other materials. And then the pipeline itself will be within that, so that it'll be free from natural disasters and free from anchors that might hit it. That seems like a very wise and good thing to do for the environment. Instead of having it on the floor, you put it well below in its own little tunnel. So, even if it breaks, it's in an enclosed tunnel. So, I'm sure I have more to say on this, but this really, I mean, we could all bring forward all kinds of resolutions about all kinds of things that are going on in the state and different, you know, 300 miles away. But do we really want to do that? I'd rather talk about parks and police things. And I'm sure the police would like to talk about police things, right? No? Okay. But for me, I just, this isn't really our place. And you look at the, what we're trying to accomplish, it's worse. So, thanks.
Thanks Alder. Alder Vanderleest?
Thank you, Mayor. It sounds like the information that we've received, that these pipelines already have been approved. One is completed at this time. And I feel that, you know, if the federal government, the Interior Department has okayed it, they're moving forward with these pipelines. And I don't think it's really necessary for us to voice ourselves as far as being against it. If it's been approved at the federal government level, it's pretty tough to change it. So, I would just say that it's a good thought, you know, we don't want any spills. But it sounds like the alternative not to have the pipeline, sounds like it's, you know, just not a good alternative either. And, you know, if the one pipeline's been in effect for over 60 years, and they're putting a new pipeline in, we have a pipeline underneath the Fox River here. It handles all our communications and the public service has all the power lines underneath there. You know, there was a couple of people that were actually, got killed, I think, in our underground line here due to the methane gas. This is years back when it was built underneath the Fox River. So, pipelines are among us. In other words, in, you know, you talk about, you know, Digger's Hotline. If you dig in your yard, they want you to, you know, to be aware of that, you know, there's, could be gas lines, electrical lines. I had professional people working in front of my property, and they cut a gas line. One company cut a gas line and shut the street down and everything else. And another company came in and cut 800 pair of communication lines. They said they, it was mismarked. So, there are things that happen. And it was, you know, most of our neighborhood was out for like, two days from that 800 pair cable phone line that went down. So, you know, when they talk about, you know, be smart and call Digger's Hotline, I'm sure that, you know, I have like 12-inch gas lines and a 6-inch gas line on my property. If any digging is done there, public service wants to, they want to be right on site. That's how, you know, critical it is, because it feeds the whole, you know, the whole west side corridor. So, I would say it sounds to me that, you know, the resolution, it's fine, but I think it's, you know, it's a little bit late. I think the federal government has final say on it. And so, I really can't support it. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Other comments from council? Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I, too, just hearing some of the discussion, reading through the emails that we've received from parties on both sides, I just can't help but think that this is another example of a resolution that's improperly before us. You know, some of the discussion I'm hearing is we're trying to basically regulate Enbridge and enforce things that are 100% outside of our jurisdiction. Other than the fact that, conjecture really, that the pipeline could burst and create a problem, could, could happen, I haven't really heard any other reason why the City of Green Bay ought to contemplate this. Yet I've heard reasons from folks that spoke here today about employees that are residents in the City of Green Bay that would potentially be directly impacted by this. You know, and I think that there are agencies, both state and federal, that is designed to handle this particular issue. The Wisconsin DNR, the EPA, tribal treaty rights. I can assure you, there's nothing that the Green Bay City Council is going to say or do that will enforce those. While I generally agree with the sentiment behind what's contained within the treaty, I mean, I don't, I, look, if we can avoid having an oil pipeline through the Great Lakes, I get it. I mean, I agree with the sentiment behind it. But it's not something for which we have control over. We don't have this jurisdiction. I think back to when we had the debate around banning of the Tarkol sealants. We had that conversation here. And we talked about banning those locally. We passed an ordinance to do that, and I supported that. But if I'm not mistaken, I was the only one that voted against the resolution to ban them in the state of Wisconsin. And the reason I did that is because I don't know what's going on in the western side of the state, the southern end of the state, to pretend that I'm the expert in what's going on in those communities. And so, it certainly wouldn't be out of precedence for me to oppose something, because I didn't feel like it should be before us. And I think that's the case here as well. So, I just want to be clear that it's not necessarily that I disagree with the sentiment behind it. In fact, I think there are many good elements contained within that resolution. But I would prefer that this body continues to focus our time around issues for which we do have control. And some of those things have been recited here today. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks Alder. Alder Galvin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to get on my, it doesn't belong here horse also. I mean, this is resolutions that we've had, public schools, telling the school board what to do, telling governments and companies what to do. And I just don't see where this is our business. We're almost a half hour now. We haven't talked about parks, streets, garbage, police, fire, or anything else that we really should be worrying about. We need to be focused on this. This is what we were elected to do at this level. We're not assemblymen. We're not state or federal elected officials. I mean, good arguments on both sides. If you want to get in one camp and believe everything they're saying, certainly, or the other side. But I have to imagine that, I know there's a gas pipeline that goes underneath the Fox River, right at the mouth of the Fox River, I believe. And that, there's another gas pipeline that runs up here from Illinois that was leaking gas all over south of here, right near the Fox River. I mean, there's a lot of stuff. There's a nuclear plant in Japan that's going to be releasing heavy water into the ocean over the next several years. I mean, there's so many things environmentally going on out there that we could have resolution after resolution after resolution. And again, does that do anything for the taxpayers of the City of Green Bay? I mean, the City of Green Bay saying, "Don't do it or do it", I, that sounds nice. It makes us feel good. But I don't think it's going to affect anything at all. And I think we're just, again, spinning our wheels over something that's really none of our business. You want to get out there and protest? You want to do, you want to join one side or the other, write letters, send out emails, all that kind of stuff? Absolutely. Go ahead. I mean, again, I'm not in favor of companies polluting our waterways or anything else like that, but I don't see why we should be focusing on this. We should be focusing on what we were elected to do. Thank you.
Thanks Alder. Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go Alder Dorf and then back to the author.
I just, how's the Oneida Nation, I think they have weighed in on this?
Sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm just curious as to whether the Oneida Nation has weighed in on this and has asked us for our support on this. Alder Scannell, do you know?
Not a direct representative of the Oneida, but Joshua's the group that brought this forward, and they've been working with, I mean, Justice Piché has been working, he's a tribal connection, not with Oneida, but all the tribes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Final comments from Alder Scannell?
Sure. Wow. Yous are way overthinking this and way overdoing it. Holy cow. We are not going to, we're not doing anything for a solution. We're not looking for a solution here. We're not even looking to stop pipelines. We're not looking to stop the oil, the flow of oil. All we're doing is stating our values. Our, people come to us to establish, for a social justice issue and a practical issue of possibly polluting our fresh water, that's how it directly affects us. I mean, that's all we're doing here is, people have come to us, which is part of our job, and they ask for us to, will we stand up for social justice, which is all we're doing. We're not telling anybody what to do as far as a pipeline. We're saying, respect treaty rights. And don't build a pipeline in the Great Lakes. That's all we're doing. And I see how, I, right, we're taking a lot of time on this. I don't know why. To me, this is something to just, yeah, we believe that. But is it going to do anything? Who knows? That's not the purpose of the resolution. The purpose of the resolution is we're standing up for our values. And that has force. What force? Where it'll go? Who knows? But I would rather stand up for our values and a value that could directly affect us with breaking the Great Lakes. I mean, you talk about affecting people. Let's all go to bottled water, the whole city. How's that going to affect you? You want to roll the dice on that? I don't. Does that mean it's not going to happen? I have no idea. I'm just saying, don't do it. That's all I can do. I'm not going to solve anything. We're not going to solve anything. I'm not asking us to solve anything. It's ridiculous. No. Don't, you're overthinking it. It's a simple resolution, saying, "This is what we believe. Respect treaty rights. Don't build a pipeline in the Great Lakes." After that, what happens, happens. We've done our job. It's not a big deal. I don't know why it's a big deal. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Thank you. I'd like to, if I could, ask a question to Alder Scannell. Who wrote the resolution, if you don't mind asking?
The basic one was taken from, I believe, Madison's resolution. And then we, I deleted some, and we went through committee, it deleted some, and some other things were tweaked. So, there was a baseline from another city. We know something in reinventing the wheel.
So, you vetted all of these statements?
I vetted every one. Twice.
Could you tell us a little more about the treaties with the US government, 1837, 1842, 1854, and 1855?
What is it you want to know?
There's a whereas when it talks about tribal rights to hunt fish, gather. And it references some, it's not a gotcha question. This is why I was conflicted.
Yep, yep.
Is that there's a lot of wheresses and a lot of statements in here that I can't ascertain if it's, you know, 100% factual. I'm not saying it's a lie, but I'd like to know the depth to the argument. But can you tell us a little more about the tribal treaties in 1837, 42?
42, 54, 55. That those treaties granted tribes rights to hunt fish, gather, and practice traditional life ways. Yes.
And you read those treaties?
Well, no. But I know about treaties from that time. That's what the treaties did. I mean, I wasn't going to read every treaty, no. I believe it's factual in that I know treaties at that time, that's what we gave them. That was a generic. That was just a general given. It wasn't anything that was controversial or had to be, you know, fought over. That was a standard practice.
Okay. No questions for Alder Scannell, but I wasn't going to comment on this, but I feel compelled to. I think that there are a lot of council members who really do take these things seriously and really do quite a bit of research. Alder Wery, you looked into this probably more than anyone other than Alder Scannell perhaps. And I personally live on a reservation, the Oneida Reservation. Just today, I went through the Menominee Reservation, drove through beautiful trees, beautiful rivers. The thought of polluting any of that is heartbreaking. But we insist this on water. So, polluting water is devastating. I know that. Usually, I vote consistently to favor conservation and nature, because when the planet and natural resources are gone, it's hard to recover. Having said that, though, it, I'm conflicted, because we can't assume that everyone thinks the same way within even tribal governments. And I say that with great sensitivity and respect. I'll give you a good example. On the Oneida Reservation, not in my neighborhood, but a part of the reservation off of the City of Green Bay, remember a few years back, there was a big sign that said, "No Roundup on the Res." And that's just the term. So, I don't know if that's, you know, insensitive. But that was just the billboard that I saw. And the reason why that caught my eye was that there were some tribal members who were really appalled with the use of Roundup on the reservation. And it got really political. The press picked up on it, and it made me uncomfortable, not made me uncomfortable, but it made me realize that it's real sensitive issues. And even people within, just like the City of Green Bay government, don't always agree in lockstep. The same could be said about tribal residents and tribal members, even people within tribal governments. So, in that particular issue, there could have been, you know, some tribal members who came forward and said, "City of Green Bay, could you weigh in on the use of Roundup and other pesticides on the reservation?" We'd be very conflicted, but the reasoning would be the same, that that Roundup often seeps into the groundwater and causes environmental damage. So, that was a real issue. Thing I have about the pipeline issue is that I remember January, February of this year, when the administration, the federal administration, cut down and revoked permits that were allowing career sustaining jobs and family-supporting jobs, basically evaporated overnight in North Dakota and other states up north. It's devastating for people. And so, these folks here are good, hard-working people, union jobs typically, high-paying jobs, and kind of hypocritical, because I, not them, but this issue is hypocritical for some of us, because I heat my home at night. I drive, and I use gasoline. We are not fully sustainable. And we had a very good presentation here tonight about Green Bay's efforts towards sustainability, but even by our own measure, our own goal, that'd be 2050. So, how do you, you know, build that bridge between now and then? And is it really our place? I have absolute, complete love and respect for tribes and treaty rights and everything like that. But I don't know everything about this resolution is 100% correct. I'm not saying it's a lie, but I can't vet this. And I'm not going to sign my name or, you know, vote for it if I can't agree for it to be true. And so, I'm really conflicted. So, I feel like abstaining from a vote is kind of the chicken way out. But on this issue, I think unless we make a motion to refer back to kind of vet every one of these statements with supporting documentation, I feel if we don't do that, at least, Enbridge could have a real issue here, possibly libelous or scandalous accusations against the City of Green Bay if we pass this as-is, because there are some things in here that it's not fair to them if we don't do our own internal research, not simply pass a resolution that was not written by us but forwarded to us. So, if we don't make a motion to refer back, I'm going to have to abstain. And I do that out of respect for the Oneidas and other tribal governments in the state and our region. But this just doesn't sit right. So, thank you.
I move to refer this back, and I'm willing to work on rewriting the, this resolution so it just clearly states our beliefs and does not have a lot of the wheresses in it, as I originally had written a much shorter version. So, I'd like to move to, to refer back only with the permission of the author, which is Alder Scannell.
Alder Dorf makes a motion to refer this item back to protection policy?
Well, I'll second that.
Seconded by Alder Scannell?
I'll second that, but I, again, I think we could just take, well, any wheresses you're unsure of and move. I mean, again, I appreciate those who are saying we're spending an awful lot of time with this. I agree. I don't really think we need to. But if you would like to take it back and rewrite it, I certainly don't have any problem with that. If that would make it some other Alders happy, I think for myself, that's, I'd rather put in too many wheresses than too few to bring before you. And you could certainly, as I said, and And you could certainly, as I said, in protection and policy and since, take out whatever is you're not sure of. That's fine by me. I, to me, it's, those are all supporting statements. I believe they're all true. I went through them. I saw nothing that I thought was factually inaccurate in any way. People who have criticized this document have not specifically stated anything that they had any problem with, and I think there's a reason for that. But even if it's true and you would like to have it removed, I, I, fine. I, I don't think it matters that much. I think it's important that we stand up and say, yes, we should respect treaty rights. Yes, we should not put a pipeline in the Great Lakes. That's all. So if Alder Dorff would like to rewrite this and the rest of the committees, the rest of the council's fine with that, sure, fine.
Alder Weary and then Alder Galvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to my comments before, I think it would be a colossal waste of time to send this back. We have so many other things to address, so many other, including a budget coming up and the ARP funds that we're getting from the federal government. So many other things that we can put in our time and effort to, not this. The email I received from Enbridge starts with, "Thank you for the opportunity to respond and correct some of the misinformation in the proposed resolution." I didn't even go into all the things that they, they had mentioned because it didn't seem like the point. But if you're going to send it back, you bet. We're going to have to go through each one of these. They obviously think there's some misrepresentations there. What a waste of time. Let's focus on city issues, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Galvin.
Just a, just a quick comment or a question. It's being alleged that treaty rights are being violated. I can't imagine that this isn't being adjudicated or has been adjudicated. And I can't imagine that a company, if it was adjudicated that they were violating treaty rights, would still be plowing through somebody's land illegally. I mean, I, I just, I have a hard time trying to fathom that happening. I mean, everyone has an opinion. I mean, we've seen it within council with our own legal advice, where council members don't believe what the city attorneys are saying. But, I mean, the law of the land is our court system. That's, that's what everything rests on. And if the law's being broken, I guess I'd like some proof that it's still being broken and not just because someone said it is. Because if you look at the last three, now be it resolved. I mean, it's, it's saying that we are against these pipelines being built. We want them stopped. We want the, the treaty rights to be respected. And I do. And if they're being broken, I want them to be respected. But if it's been adjudicated that they're not, then, then how can I get on board with this? Thank you.
Responding to that, Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to that, I could point out, in the email I received, on line three, the one that's already done, that we're against, that's done, the one that's done. "After six years of science-based review and multiple approvals, line three, the one that's done, is the most studied pipeline project in Minnesota history. The project was reviewed extensively and approved repeatedly by the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, the US Army Corps of Engineers, the Bureau of Indian Affairs approved it, and of course, the Fond du Lac Band of Lake Superior-Chippewa." There's a map that you can see if you go to their website. That it did use to go through the Leech Lake Reservation. Well, they worked with the Leech Lake Reservation, Red Lake, White Earth Reservation, and Fond du Lac Reservation to put it through areas that weren't as sensitive. And they show you exactly where it's going. And in Wisconsin, they took it exactly all out of the reservation or in the UP. So I don't know where breaking treaties is because they've gone out of their way to make sure it's respected. That would be one major point of contention right there, is it looks like they've really run out of their way to, to get it out of where it's not wanted. So, thanks.
So there any additional comments on the motion to refer back to committee? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. All in favor of referral signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
No.
We'll use the board.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote.
And this is again on referring the item back to protection and policy.
It came up and it just left.
And then, thank you, Your Honor, Alders Brunet, Stoyer, and Dorff. How would you like to be reported?
Alder Stoyer is a nay.
Thank you. And then Brunet and Dorff?
I voted.
Aye.
Alder Dorff is a aye?
Um, yes, I voted.
And then, okay, I see that. Thank you very much. And I will display the vote.
And that motion fails by a vote of seven to four. Motion before us is adoption. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we will use the board again. And this is on, on approval of, of the resolution.
Thank you, Alders. You may vote. Thank you, Alder Stoyer and Dorff.
Alder Dorff is a nay and Alder Stoyer is a nay.
And this is on a motion to adopt?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I will now display the vote.
All right, we have eight noes, two abstentions, one aye. That fails. Onto committee, the whole, item two. And so this, just on that real quick, this is actually informational. We do have the resolution later on in our agenda. But I think this is the appropriate time to kind of go to our finance department and/or outside consultant, as well as Director Steck Schulte from Community Economic Development. Thanks also to those who attended our meeting tonight and those who attended online. Appreciate the discussion. So with that, is it Director Steck Schulte, do you want to step up at this point? Or is, I'm not sure if Director Ellenbecker is, is on the line.
She is, she is here. I think we would probably turn it over if, if it's okay with, with the council and you, Mayor, to give a brief, brief overview from Mr. Todd Taves from Ellers would probably be our best option here.
Absolutely. Entertained, do we need a motion to open the floor on, on that?
Yeah, yes, you do.
Motion made by Alder Johnson to open the floor. That was seconded by Alder Galvin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. Mr. Taves, and if you could just state your name and address for us, I would appreciate it.
My name is Todd Taves with Ellers and Associates. My address is North, West 233 North 7651 Berrywood Court, Sussex, Wisconsin. And I have a very brief presentation, Mayor. Would it be appropriate for me to share my screen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Taves. Let me give you co-host capabilities. If you just give me one moment, I will let you. Just give us one more moment, if you would.
Certainly.
And there you are. You are now the co-host. You may share your screen.
Thank you. I assume you can see the slides?
We can, yep.
Very good. So we went to market today with the bonds that the RDA and the council authorized back in August. And first thing I would note is that at the appropriate time that the council considers the resolution, the final par amount has been reduced to 27,860,000. So that comports with the updated resolutions that were circulated late this afternoon. The bonds were sold to Baird as underwriter with a true interest rate of 2.837%. By frame of reference, the old bonds were just a shade under 6%. So effectively, we've cut the interest rate to less than half. The future savings over the remaining life of the bonds, which were refinanced over the same term, so there was no extension, is just under 8.8 million dollars. Just a quick snapshot of that reduction in the bond size. What that results from is due to the favorable interest rates. The debt service reserve requirement was reduced from what was originally anticipated. Similarly, the securities portfolio that funded the escrow for the advanced refunding received very favorable rates as well. One additional cost we did incur is we made the decision to buy bond insurance to provide for an even additional pricing advantage. But when we consider the underges and the overges, the net difference is that $55,000 reduction, but you still receive the same amount of proceeds that you need to effectuate the refinancing. Again, in terms of the savings, the old debt service is displayed to the left, the new debt service at this location. The savings strictly comparing debt service to debt service is actually close to 9.1 million dollars. However, part of that savings results from the fact that we're able to use funds on hand from the existing debt service reserve to reduce the issue size. In other words, we're taking money. You already have the issueless bond, so we don't save. So when we net that out, again, we come to just under 8.8 million dollar figure. That is about 1.7 million dollars more than we had estimated back in August. And the primary reason for that is we did seek a rating from Standard and Poor's, whereas the prior bonds were rated by Moody's. Secured an A2 rating. Through Standard and Poor's, we secured a double A minus rating, which is two notches higher than the prior Moody's rating. That is largely due to a difference in how S&amp;P used the credit versus Moody's and resulted in a substantial pricing differential to the advantage of the RDA and the city. As mentioned, we also chose to purchase bond insurance because the additional savings that were able to result from offering that were less than the premium that was paid. And one last reminder is that we did include within the size of the issue, the funds necessary to make the December 1st interest payment this year. The current projections indicate there will be no room tax revenues available, which was the same situation as in June. But unlike June, the city will not have to appropriate funds from any other source to make that payment. The first actual debt service payment that the city will need to make on the new bonds will be June of next year. And happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Taves, for that overview. And thanks so much for your, your work on, on this topic. Questions from council? Don't need a motion at this point. We'll do that with the resolution, but appreciate the support. With that, we'll move along to the report of the finance committee.
Excuse me, Mayor. They have to close the floor.
Oh, yeah, good point. Motion to close the floor made by Alder Dorff, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay? The floor is closed. Report of the finance committee? Motion to approve was made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? One and three. Any others? Hearing none others. Items one and three will be handled separately. All in favor of the remainder of that report, please signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Report has been approved with the exception of items one and three. Your wishes on items one? Motion to approve made by Alder Corpus Dax, seconded by Alder Scannell. The item was pulled by Alder Galvin? You have the floor.
I just want to thank Director Ellenbecker and her staff and our new financial advisors, Ellers. What just took place here is, is going to save us a lot of angst that we went through this spring. This December, we'll be able to make our payment without having to rob Peter to pay Paul at all. And I, this, this deal is going to benefit the entire Brown County taxpaying system, almost 9 million dollars over the life of this, of this loan. And I, I think that's huge. And, I mean, I can't say enough how much that's going to affect us and everyone else going forward. So that's, that's all. Thank you.
Absolutely. Well said. Any others on that? I was joking, we should all expect some thank you notes from our surrounding municipalities. Maybe not. We'll see. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. That item is approved. Onto item three. Motion to approve made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Corpus Dax. That item was pulled by Alder Stoyer. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. The reason, I wasn't going to bring this back up because it's been vetted quite a bit. I've heard both sides. Mr. Campan was sitting here at the meeting, but he said he got evicted in some way. He can't, he can't get back in. So I, I wanted to have him have the opportunity to testify, but he's, he's not here at this time.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes.
Luke Campan is still in the Zoom meeting.
Is he?
Yes, he is.
All right, I didn't see him. Okay. Well, with that being said, I'll, I'll make just a couple of comments and then I would like him to be able to testify. So this has been heard at Parks. It's been heard at P&amp;P. I won't belabor it much. It was a citizen, Luke Campan, at 1236 Thrush Street. He has a sidewalk on his west, on his west side property. He's got no sidewalk to the north. He thought that the trees on the north end of it were his trees. He cut them. The city caught him or caught the contractor two-thirds of the way through the project. Director Ditchite had mentioned that those trees, you know, the ash trees were, were dead pretty much, and he was going to mark them anyhow. But Mr. Campan went ahead with it. He paid $3,500 to have it done. We had the city kind of take a look at it, find, find out how much it would cost to do it, and it was $1,077. So our committee stated that, you know, that would be fine, that, you know, for reimbursement for that, you know, are we setting a precedent? Hopefully not, you know, because I think, you know, I think that was the worry, that, you know, this is setting a precedent. Many times with our P&amp;P committee, we give licenses to people who have had felonies, second chances. I'm looking at this as kind of a second chance type of thing. He was very contrite about it. The trees were coming down anyhow. Everything was talked about precedence that, you know, how dare you even think about this? And I, you know, I pretty much was alone at this committee meeting talking about it. I'm representing my citizen. That's it. All I'm doing is representing my citizen. So I would make a, I would like to make a motion to open the floor.
Motion to open the floor made by Alder Stoyer, seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The floor is open. Mr. Campan, if you'd like to make some comments, feel free to just state your name and address for us.
Yes, Luke Campan, 1236 Thrush Street in Green Bay. Thank you for hearing me today and thank you, Alderman Stoyer, for summarizing the issue. Yeah, basically, in short, I just, I have, I have two sides, or two sides to my house. One has a sidewalk, one does not. I had the impression wrongly that if there was a sidewalk, that, I mean, it was the city's trees, and if there was no sidewalk, that it was not the city's trees. So I had a contractor come in and remove those city trees. Afterwards, I found out, well, because they were, they were dead trees, emerald ash-bored trees. And so I had the contractor come in and then the city stop by and said that they were the city trees. So I reached out and I'm just basically asking for reimbursement for whatever it would have cost the city to remove those dead trees, not asking for any more than that. And it's, that's the short of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from Mr. Campan? Seeing none, entertain a motion? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Gerlach. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The floor is closed. Any comments? Alder Johnson and then Alder Dorff.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, sometimes I think we get so worried about making the perfect decision that it clouds our judgment for making a good decision. And, and this is a scenario where we're worried about setting a precedence. And if the precedence that we're worried about setting is that we are communicating to our public that we are a compassionate government that understands unique circumstances, well, quite frankly, that's a precedence I would like to set. I mean, we, we should be thanking this resident for spending 36, what, $3,600 was it? $3,500 of his own money to solve an $1,100 city problem? Boy, that's not a precedence that I'm worried. Boy, that's not a precedence that I'm worried, that citizens in our community are going to take advantage of. So I would actually, because the motion on the floor is to deny, I am against that motion. I think everybody knows the story behind this, an innocent, innocent, innocent mistake that still solved a problem that the city needed to solve. And I can assure you, nobody is going to be rushing to make this same mistake. I mean, that's just silly to think that that's what's going to happen here. So I would support opposing the current motion on the floor, and I think if I'm not mistaken, we have to first act on that motion, correct, Mayor? We can't.
I believe so.
Yeah, okay. So I would encourage the council to vote against this, and I think it's more than appropriate for us to show the residents of our community that we can have a government that they are proud of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder Dorf.
Thank you. I think that was a rather disingenuous description of what happened at Finance. We were asked to take money from the city's contingency account. I attended the Parks meeting where it was said, Parks doesn't have money for this kind of thing. There is no line item for that. All the citizens of the city should pay for this mistake. Take it from the contingency fund. As the Chair of Finance, we guard the contingency fund because we need it in cases of emergencies, legal emergencies, for example. We have a lot of fiscal conservatives on this council sometimes, and sometimes they seem to go in an entirely different direction, that it's absolutely fine to take from our contingency account eleven-hundred, seventy dollars, not sure the exact amount. I don't really think it's going to set a precedent. I don't think people are going to go out and spend thirty-five-hundred dollars and then come back to the city and say, now reimburse me eleven-hundred, and I'm okay losing twenty-four-hundred, when you would have done it for me for no charge at all. I don't think that's going to happen. But I am very uncomfortable with just using our contingency account for something like this. I also believe that the city, we have rules about the trees. There are rules that citizens cannot take down the city trees. I understand that a mistake was made, but at that same Parks meeting, there was a huge plan from our foresters on how they're going to deal with these ashbor, ash trees. I don't know. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact name of these bugs or that are hurting our trees, but there's a plan. There's a plan, and I think that Alderlin Gerlach will probably speak to that plan. So she's on Parks, I'm not going to steal her thunder. But it wasn't because we're not trying to be a gracious and loving and sensitive city council. Yes, we recognize it was a mistake, but I just don't feel comfortable taking this money out of our contingency fund, and that's why I voted against this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. There's no comments. Alder Scanell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think the precedent is that you make a mistake, and you can come to the city, and we'll pay you out of our contingency fund. I think that's the precedent we're worried about, not so much that particular kind of mistake, but people can make all kinds of mistakes that end up costing them money and wanting to maybe try and recoup whatever they can from the city. So that's the precedent I think we need to be concerned about. And how concerned, I'm not sure. I mean, I certainly feel for the guy. I don't know that I support paying for, paying him for it, though. I don't, would my constituents say, he made a mistake, we'll pitch in and help him out? I think maybe yes, maybe no. I don't know. I mean, how many times are we going to do that? If someone else makes a mistake? I don't know. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Vanderleest?
Thank you, Mayor. This gentleman paid thirty-five-hundred dollars to have the trees removed, is that correct? And the city sent him an invoice for eleven-something because they removed the trees? Is that correct? Well, in other words, if he paid for the trees to be removed, let's just forget about it. He already paid for it.
Can I explain? He wants us to pay him eleven-hundred dollars. He wants us to pay him the amount it would have cost the city because he wants some reimbursement.
So, all right. Well, I'd say this, that, you know, it was a legitimate mistake. He had the trees taken down, and that's the end of the story. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. I could not attend the Finance Committee. I apologize. That another commitment, but I spoke at length about this at the Parks Committee a couple of times. And real quickly reiterate that point to the motion. I'm against the motion of denying. I agree with Alder Johnson. I'm not too concerned about precedents. We talk a lot about precedents. I brought it up, but each council member, each issue, we think with our own heads, depending on the circumstances at that time, there will never be an exact repeat of this situation. There won't be. I'm pretty convinced of that because there are issues that we have discussed all my years in the council that never again come up. So that the precedent set, if there is such a thing, it won't be remembered the next time the council reconvenes on the issue that's similar or the same. On this particular issue, we have an emerald ashbore crisis in this city. Let's not forget that. Like, we have a huge problem, and I know we don't want to think of trees as crises, but that's exactly the situation we're dealing with. Trees in the city right away on the city terrace, emerald ashbore has devastated many ash trees, and they're a safety hazard. And so this young man, a homeowner, he had the tree. There was no sidewalk there, so he falsely assumed that the tree was his responsibility. So he cut those trees down. After the fact, he realized that the city had plans to cut those trees down in, you know, a year or so. So he came to his city government and said, oh, I made a mistake, and all I'm simply asking for is a reimbursement of what the city would have spent to cut down these trees a year or so from now. And I'll be honest with you. This is my opinion that I shared then. As the youngest member of this council, and I don't want to be an ageist at all, but I'm sure that's the way it sounds. There are many, and I don't know how, I don't know how old the gentleman is, so maybe these comments are inappropriate, but well, let's just say, first time or newer homeowners, when they're looking to invest in the city of Green Bay, and they're looking to buy property, and they're looking to make Green Bay part of their home. A lot of times, these issues with municipal government are confusing to homeowners. It's, we don't know every rule. We don't know every resolution, every ordinance. So when there are situations that fall into a gray area, I think it's completely appropriate and acceptable for a member of this public, a taxpayer no less, to come to their city government and ask for a little lenience and a little, you know, flexibility given the situation. The plan brought forward by Director Dishite and Forester Pilot, great plan on the surface, but that plan means that we cannot cut down stumps for three years. Let's remember, we have an emerald ashbore crisis. Either the city taxpayers would have paid for this in a year or so, or we take it from the contingency fund. We have quite a bit of money left in the contingency fund still. Last year, we took money from the contingency fund due to the economic situation around COVID to balance our budget. This coming year, we are increasing the contingency fund as presented by the mayor in his budget. So I'm not too concerned about it. I think that this is a message that the city of Green Bay is not overly rigid when it comes to these gray areas. So on that, I do not support the motion. I'm completely fine taking a thousand or so dollars from the contingency fund because we would have had to pay that in a year or so anyways. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Step, here it steps on me. I don't make that noise.
Yeah, it's a mic.
I'll just project. I concur with Alder Burnett and Alder Stoyer and Alder Johnson. These cases, you know, back when I started a million years ago, I was pretty hardline, black and white. Everything's black and white. Makes it a lot easier to make a decision, right? But not everything's black and white, and that's why we're here. People can appeal to their elected body and show up and then make their case, and we can decide on it, case by case. And so all the arguments have been laid out, and I would be against denying it and then hope that, once that fails, we approve it. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments? Alder Galvin?
I understand this gentleman made a mistake. I've had two of my own constituents that cut down fifty-year-old maple trees on the terrace because they made a mistake. There was a homeowner or homeowners along the Bay of Green Bay that cut down a whole line of trees because it was obstructing their view of the water. The city never found out who did it, and no one was ever held accountable for it. If I remember correctly, there's thousands, literally thousands of ash trees in the city that need to be removed. And the way we budget that is that we've hired individuals, employees, who go out every day and cut down these trees. We don't have extra money to hire outside firms to go do this. Now, my understanding is this gentleman was not cited for cutting down these trees in violation of city ordinance, that that was considered, okay, we'll give him a pass on this. They were dead anyway. But to say that this could not happen again, it's going to happen again. It's already happened. And I think if we were to ask the forestry department how many times it's happened where people have taken upon themselves to cut down city trees, whether they're dead or not, whether it's safe or not, what if someone had been injured? Who would be liable then? Would we say, ooh, well, we'll take the liability, because we should have done it anyway? I mean, I just, I have a hard time with this. So I'm not in favor of paying out on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. All right. Lot of discussion on a thousand dollars, so let's move to the vote here, if we're all good with that. The motion on the floor is to deny reimbursement. That was my assumption, that we were going to use the board. Yes. Clerk, can we use the board?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
She's not telepathic, apparently.
And so the motion I have, though, is to approve the denial.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Alders. You may vote.
So this is to deny reimbursement? Yes is to deny.
Thank you, Alders, Brunet, Stoyer, and Dorf. How would you like to be recorded?
Alder Dorf is aye.
Thank you.
I just voted no.
Okay.
Alder Stoyer is no.
And Alder Burnett is no as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And here's the vote.
So that motion to deny succeeds six to five. Onto the report of the Redevelopment Authority. Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Any items here to be handled separately? One and two. All right. Items one and two will be handled separately. All in favor of the remainder? There is no remainder? So we'll just take those items. Item one, your wish is there. That's informational. So that is actually informational. So we'll go to Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. And recognizing that it's informational, I don't really have a motion to go along with this. However, recognizing that we did adopt by ordinance design standards for that Legends District, and of course, this is in the southern end of my district, one of the things that I would at least like to request is that our Economic Development Director sign off on the lighting that is put in there just to ensure that it is in compliance with those design standards. For those of you who know me, I'm a huge proponent of community investment in design within everything we do. And so I think sometimes Public Works does a very good job, obviously with the functionality and utility of what we do. And I think Economic Development plays a very important role with the design of what we do. And so I would, in this particular instance, would just respectfully request that both of those department heads have a look at what's being installed over there.
Yeah, absolutely. And Director Stechschulte and his team have been very involved in this discussion, but I'll go to Director Stechschulte just to add anything there.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Alder Johnson, we have been meeting as a staff team in terms of reviewing essentially a pole design that would certainly address the traffic needs, but then would also still provide some customization for the pedestrian-level lighting. So we're trying to find, obviously, find out a kind of a range of design options that were certainly reached out to, not only from the staff level, but actually also we did an outreach to the property owners in the area to ask in terms of what sort of feedback they would have. So I think we've identified, I believe the Public Works Department identified, I think it was up to five different fixtures for the pedestrian-level lights on those same poles to allow for at least a targeted effort on that. So we certainly agree, full, to have a good design, and it really, so that's an aesthetic that appeals to the area. But we're also certainly working with Public Works and certainly their needs to try to manage inventory and try to make sure that they actually have a fixture that is, that can be replaced and repaired and have an adequate supply on that. So we believe we're comfortable right now in terms of that we've done significant outreach to try to provide some degree of design options for the particular poles in this area.
Director, thank you.
Great. And with that, we will go to item two. Alder Johnson?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Dorf. We still have the floor, Alder?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Assistant Director Sherri Renee Weg. First off, she did reach out to me today and ask if I had any questions, and I just, one, wanted to thank her for doing that. At the time, I didn't have any, but as I read through this plan one final time before the meeting, something did come up, and specifically in the plan, it mentioned that is, obviously, the shipyard neighborhood investment strategy. This body here, when we did the development agreement with Redevelopment Authority to invest ten million dollars into the shipyard area, we also invested a million dollars into that neighborhood area. And within the TADA plan, it mentioned that we are coming to the end of that, and perhaps that the new TADA funds could be redirected towards a new neighborhood, which I think is wonderful. I'd like that targeted approach. But I was hoping, and again, I apologize to Assistant Director Renee Weg, because this is on the spot, but do you have any information in terms of that one-million-dollar commitment that the city made in that development agreement? How, I guess, how far along within that are we?
I can get you those numbers, Alder Johnson. I don't have them. I know we've spent more money, I think, in block grant and home than neighborhood enhancement. We had different channels for money that we were going to spend in those districts. But I can certainly get that to you and send that to you on where we stand with that. And like I said in the plan, TADA can be used anywhere in the city. We're not going to turn any application down that comes in from somewhere out of an area that we're working. It's just that, as a department, we're going to be starting to work in that Old North neighborhood. So probably what's going to be used for TADA in the Old North is going to be more focused towards single-family, single-family new builds or rehabs or those types of things in Old North. But again, we've had people inquire about projects all over the city.
And you've kind of answered my second question, I think, with that statement, which is, the TADA plan in no way, shape, or form actually obligates the city to spend money in certain geographic areas, correct?
No, it's part of the policy just asks that we look at the plan going forward, and if there's any specific neighborhoods we might be looking at. So Old North is, because we have so many parcels coming out of the floodplain, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for us to build in this neighborhood. So it's a good chance to maybe use some of these funds for single-family homeownership in that specific price range we're looking for.
Okay, great. And if you could provide that report to me, that'd be awesome. I look forward to that. I have no other comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. Any others? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. That motion has been approved. Prediction policy? Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved. Granting operator licenses. Motion to approve made by Alder Vanderly, seconded by Alder Scanell. Any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. The ayes have it. That report has been approved. Personnel? Motion to approve made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Receive and place on file.
Receive and place on file.
Motion has been made to receive and place on file the municipal court report for September 2021, that was made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it. Onto resolutions.
Suspend the rules and take up one and three.
Motion has been made to suspend the rules and take up items one and three with one roll call vote, that was made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt those resolutions, resolutions one and three made by Alder Scanell and Alder Dorf. Please use the board.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote.
Alder Dorf is aye.
Mayor, aye.
Alder Storey is aye.
Thank you, Your Honor, and now here is the vote.
And those resolutions are adopted, eleven zero. Resolution R2.
Motion to approve.
Resolution R2. All one and three.
Motion to approve made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, actually, we need to use the board regardless, so we'll use the board on R2. Apologies.
Thank you, Your Honor, just give me one moment.
Look, Brandy, you swayed someone.
Thank you, Alders, you may vote. Thank you. And then Alder Dorf?
Alder Dorf is nay.
Thank you. And here's the displayed vote.
And that resolution fails. One, aye, eight, nay, two abstentions.
And two abstentions.
Onto ordinances first reading.
Advance.
Motion to advance made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, that ordinance has been advanced to a second and final reading. Petitions and communications?
I have one.
Alder Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor. This will be protection and policy. For the sake of full transparency to the public, for discussion with possible action that the common council officially requests and receives a full list of funders and donors to Law Forward and State's United Democracy Center in order for the city to retain them as legal counsel regarding ongoing election issues, these two groups seem to be politically motivated, special interest groups, and all of the citizens of Green Bay have a right to know who is funding them while the city confers with them on a legal defense. Thank you.
Any others? Motion to refer.
To refer.
A second.
Motion to refer made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Burnett. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, and that communication is referred. Admon.
To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The ayes have it, adjourned.